Hello and welcome to The Simpsons Index. We have a cracker of a new episode today as returning champion, Ryan Duncan is coming along to help us review Clown V Board of Education. But just before we get into the podcast, wanna remind you about our other podcast, Starring Springfield, where we're reviewing the movies that star the cast of The Simpsons and out now, we've got a review of Jingle All the Way, just in time for Easter. And this movie, of course, stars the immortal Phil Hartman. Go check it out wherever you get your podcasts. There's some links in the show notes as well, but for now, The Simpsons Index.
The Simpsons Index, an online spreadsheet that is also a podcast. This is the podcast.
Coming to you outside Quest Studios, this is The Simpsons Index, episode 295. Hello out there. I'm your host Elliot J O'Neil, joined here as always, except when he's not by BT Callaway.
Ahoy.
Ahoi. And joining us all the way from beautiful Los Angeles is Ryan Duncan.
Hey everybody, how you guys doing today?
Doing good in Australia, man. And thank you so much for joining us for The Simpsons Index. We rate and review Simpsons and now Ryan, you're a returning champion. And we ask our returning champions, have you been keeping up with The Simpsons, old or new or otherwise? Are you doing any Simpsons watching?
Yeah, I um, we finished season thirty-three a couple of weeks ago, so that's why when you gave me the options, I was looking and like, it's just hard to like, watch weekly. Like, I'm not a weekly watcher. Then apparently they still have those, which kind of blows my mind.
Yeah.
Because I was looking at it, um, this episode and it was like, this was the highest rated episode on Fox that week. And it's, I don't think I cracked a million viewers, which I'm like, oh, that's bleak. But no, yeah, we just finished, we finished season thirty-three. There are a couple of episodes from thirty-four and thirty-five that I've watched that'll like, because of the buzz.
Hmm.
I think the one that I probably mentioned to you guys last time I was on was the mid-child's dream, the one about Marge being sick.
Yeah.
Yeah, we loved that.
Oh, for good reason. And I remember you and you guys and your guest gave it unanimous gold, which in my opinion, damn near cubic zirconium. Like, three gold for a season thirty-five, thirty-four episode? Yeah, that's a, that's cubic right there.
Oh, yeah, that, that's the thing. It's hard to say because like, it's definitely cubic for a later era episode, but yeah, we're still somewhat comparing it to the old years.
Yeah, we've had that discussion of like, it's hard to have a latter day cubic because cubic usually means essential. And how do you define something so late in the run as being essential to the, the vibe of the show?
Yeah.
I, I would say out of all the episodes that Disney's produced, it's probably the closest to essential they've ever made. Just because it's, it's a really good March episode. Like, how many, I don't know how many of those existed during the golden run. Like, it's nice that Marge gets a highlight and it's such a universal truth episode. Like, every mother, go, every parent goes through what Marge goes through. Like, so I'm glad you guys liked it.
Oh, absolutely.
Cause I think I was one of the ones telling you guys, you need to review it.
Well, yeah, and we reviewed another great newer episode with you, Lisa's Belly. That's one that I've returned to since and been, were we too nice? No, that's a really good one. And another one dealing with, uh, heady stuff and, and you know, it's exciting that even after thirty-six or whatever years now and seven hundred, nearly eight hundred episodes, that they can still come up with new refreshing ideas.
Yeah.
Bringing us to this episode today.
Yeah, that's the irony being, this is the second episode written by Jeffrey Westbrook that we are reviewing on the podcast. You guys wanna guess? The other, I was a guest for, for the earlier episode that he wrote.
Oh, okay. He's written a bunch, so I've kind of, uh, lost those. Which one was that?
It was The Road to Cincinnati. He wrote.
Oh.
Okay.
We didn't hate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 it just, I, I was like, oh, it was like a happy coincidence that I like picked out an episode. So like, there's a little theme going of me in the podcast with Jeff Westbrook. His three Futurama episodes I recommend heavily. Like, those are some of my favorite Futuramas. Simpsons maybe, maybe not as much.
No, I remember when we had our friends from Shut Up and Tape My Podcast, the Futurama Podcast, that we were reviewing A Simpsons and Jeff Westbrook came up and they were like surprised, cause it wasn't so good. And they were like, yeah, his Futuramas were insane. Which ones were they? Do you know?
He had three Futuramas. I've got it pulled up. The Day the Earth Stood Stupid, fantastic episode.
Incredible.
The Thirty Percent Iron Chef. I love that episode. And then Teenage Mutant Leela Hurdles. So that's the episode where they, they all get younger. So like, his three episodes of Futurama are incredible. Like, I legitimately love them. And then between the two that I've reviewed with you guys, I don't love either. I, I'm looking at his Simpsons episodes.
Oh man, I am looking at them and there is some crap. Like, to be fair, he comes in in season sixteen, so like, not the best start.
Not the most fertile ground.
But, yeah, like, he wrote Ned's Catch. We liked that, where they did Ned and Edna get together, but then he wrote the follow-up, which we weren't a fan of. The Man Who Grew Too Much, where Sideshow Bob becomes a superhero.
Ah.
Um, Bobby, it's cold out. Oh, we didn't hate that one. Um, Diary Queen, where Bart finds Edna's diary. We did not like that at all.
Yeah, I remember it being interesting concept for execution.
Yeah. Well, no, that's a good segue BT right there. Interesting concept, poor execution. I think unfortunately describes this episode we're about to talk about.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, yeah, segueing nicely into, yeah, we just watched season thirty-four, episode twenty-one, Clown V Board of Education. First released in May of twenty twenty-three, it was directed by Lance Kramer, written by Jeff Westbrook. In this episode, it's Homie the Clown, but it's Bart instead this time and complete with the mob's involvement. It is insane how derivative this episode is. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of editorializing already. But first I must ask, guys, what did you think?
You can editorialize, you're the editor. That's fine. That's what you do.
Aha.
And I think a big old shrug emoji, eh, there are moments in this ep, there's a solid run in this episode where I'm enjoying myself. And I'm curious if you guys agree, the moment Fat Tony is introduced, it just, ooh.
Well, even before then.
Nice slide whistle noise there, definitely.
I think, I think the most fun is kind of right in the middle when this, you know, school is getting going, you get little, you know, bits and pieces of the classes and stuff.
The students.
But then I wrote down, but what happens? Because there's no obvious conflict or direction. And then Fat Tony shows up, you're like, oh, okay.
I really wonder if during the writing process, it was, oh, what's the conflict of the story? And instead of taking, in my opinion, the natural approach of Krusty has been ripping off parents like a lot of schools. And the conflict is he feels guilty that like, I feel like I'm helping these students, but also I'm making a ton of money that I don't need. Like, that's the angle I really wish this episode was taken, which is the inflation of tuition rates.
Yeah.
Especially in the United States.
Would have tied in with like, all his throws to his father, cause he's always like, you know, looking at the portrait and be like, I finally did something you'd be proud of. And you have to, you're already dead to see it. And then would have had a moment of how much it's, you know, how much he doesn't need to charge. And yeah, that would be an interesting angle.
I, I think they were setting, they wanted something with his father. I think the angle, because most educate, no, all educators aren't doing it for the money. Nobody goes into education to get rich. They're doing it to make their students' lives better. And Krusty, you know, is doing it to make money. There's your natural conflict, like, like the story, you know, screenwriting one-on-one. Krusty thinks he wants the money. But what he really needs is to help the students. And they just disregard that.
That even ties back in the beginning where the audience is all old and he's like, ah, we're a kids' show. Where are all the kids? And it's like, whoa.
Yeah, so Talking Screenwriting One-on-One, this episode to me just doesn't know what it wants. Like, it's got some ideas, like you're mentioning with Krusty's father and wanting to make him proud beyond the grave and stuff. But it's throwing in so many different elements that it's just blitzing through a bunch of plot points and not ever settling in one spot. And that ever not being the point either. And in a bubble, I can take this episode as, eh, that was twenty-two minutes of my time, sure. But I think to me, the insulting part comes from the fact that is so heavily derivative of Homie the Clown. Again, to the point that it's the clown school, it's the Simpson getting clown training, being surprisingly good at it.
Rift of the Magi was referenced in one of the things I looked at. So I haven't watched Rift of the Magi in a minute. But apparently this episode is those two, like, their worst elements.
Yeah.
Which is sad to think about.
But then, yeah, the, like you guys were pointing out, what the part of this episode that was working is, yeah, the, the creamy middle in this, this Oreo of an episode.
Yeah.
Is that, yeah, the, the kid's actually excelling and Krusty like, oh, I was in it for the money, but it is surprising good. Then the mob gets involved and then it's like, why the fuck did you do this? Because you're just drawing the comparisons to Homie the Clown even further.
Mm-hmm. You wanna know my, like, in my brain, like, within two seconds of like, how do you add some conflict that feels real? One of the students can't afford to keep coming. Bam.
Yeah.
And that, but they're, they're thriving here. And it's the question that Krusty's conflated with is, I'm helping this young person out, but what, do I take the financial hit? So much of like, the beginning was tied to the money of it, like, when he came up with the concept of the school. Just keep that theme going. Like, it's, it's painfully relevant. Like, the debate of, do I pay for my child's tuition? To be in a good school or do I stick them in a school they're not gonna be good at? That's an easy conflict that doesn't feel out of left field. Like,
That's it.
I'm sorry, I groaned when he was talking to the photo of his dad. And it's, he thought that was his dad talking to him like, no, you know, your dad doesn't sound like Fat Tony. He's never sounded like Fat. That joke to me was painful, cause I'm like, that's not, he would never think that's his father.
But you're exactly right as well. It just comes out of left field. The mob just like, no, we're entering the story to take out cut. And it's like, why? Like, it's not tying into anything at the start of the episode, like, yeah, Krusty needs to raise money to pay the mob. But, you know, you wouldn't do that because that was Homie the Clown, so why do it now?
Like, you have fertile ground with charter schools taking taxpayer money. Like, just have, have it be the cartel of private schools ripping off. There's so many horror stories of schools opening, taking money from families and taxpayers, and then shuttering after a year. Like, it's there.
It's so, yeah, there's precedent. All right, let's hook into the questionnaire and really fucking pick this thing apart. BT, starting with you, for better or worse, what's a moment that stands out to you?
Yeah, there are a couple of minor ones and there's kind of an overview, but seeing as we talked a lot of overview, let me look at some of the small ones. Uh, my main one may just be, stop misusing Johnny Tightlips for the love of God.
Good fucking God, his character trait is in his name. How do they keep fucking this up?
Yeah, cause he comes in the absurd and they're like, meant to be school crossing guards. He's like, ah, I'm on, I'm on a break here or something. It's like, why are you, why are you talking?
And, um, my true feelings for you were this. And it's like, no.
Yeah, this is not what that character does. He is a one-note character and you're playing the wrong note.
And also, I think it's Azariah doing the voice acting. I think he's doing a bad job here. I don't think I was a good line read for any of Johnny Tightlips stuff.
And to be fair, I do like, there's a scene later where they're playing poker where Johnny Tightlips sits his cards on fire rather than tell them what he has. Great. But then it's immediately undone when Krusty walks in and goes, ah, I see you've got the rubber flower on your lapel. Squirt me. I love that gag. I'm giving you all this personal information about me, Johnny Tightlips.
God, they didn't even, what you do with that joke, you, you tell the audience, hey, he can't do the water squirt or else it'll electrocute him. You add a little bit of breath in between that. You don't go straight to, hey, squirt me with water. You build up to it, like.
Yeah, or have just, like, I don't know, maybe when Johnny Tightlips sets his cards on fire, it sets the rest of the table on fire. And they're like, ah, put it out with your flower lapel, rather than having someone go, oh, you have the flower. Squirt me, please.
Yes.
I'm Johnny Tightlips. Would you like to know more information about me?
Yeah, it's so funny that we're talking about character integrity of a character that's like.
I get one.
Well, see, we can talk about character integrity when his whole shtick is in his name. Like, he's not, he, he is a one-note character. And if you're not getting the one-note right, kind of frustrating.
It's like going Disco Stu loves country music. It's like, no, you don't. That's your one thing.
Uh, how about you, Ryan? What's a moment from this episode that stands out to you for better or worse?
Um, for better, I actually really liked that the kids that did end up going to the school were actually like, learning something. Cause you're taking education from a different approach and they ended up beating Springfield Elementary in the, the questions. Like, you're demonstrating that not every student learns in the traditional way and they can thrive in other elements. And like, that's what I mean by there's good to this episode. There's the framework of something quite smart. And like, god, they dropped it in like, what, they brought it back in the final seconds to save Krusty from getting shot? Cause they, oh, Krusty's gonna get shot. How do we fix it? The kids show up on unicycles.
Yeah, absolutely. They all understand exactly what's going on and come in on unicycles with their phones recording and, uh, with no setup.
And that's really what bugs me, like, what really, but there's so much that bugs me about this thing. But like, yeah, you're right, right. The whole acquired learning thing is quite inspirational because, yeah, conventional public schooling education doesn't work for a certain percentage of people. And so taking a different approach by reframing it, yeah, if you just have dry math, the parabolic curve and you know, the X blah, 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 I didn't pay attention. But like, uh, but yeah, demonstrating it with the pie and having like, that kind of interactive education will work so well for, especially a student like Bart, who doesn't thrive under those circumstances. So.
And there's history to that.
Yeah.
Bart gets an F. Like, there's plenty for them to work with on showing, like, hey, just because somebody's a bad student in their traditional setting, doesn't mean they can't learn. And they laid that groundwork and then they tossed it aside.
Yeah, and especially with the crux of the episode, like, yeah, they're not really using their clowning to bring down the mob here. It's just, yeah.
Cell phones. Like, it's not the clowning that's saying, it's the fact that they're broadcasting it. Like, it's, oh, my phone has magic powers. The mafia is not going to shoot me now.
It's just, ah, but how do we make it clown? I don't know. Put them on unicycles. God, we're going to lunch.
Well, yeah, and that's what stands out to me, the whole going to lunch of this episode is because, uh, like I was saying, it doesn't really know what it wants and it doesn't really know what it wants scene to scene. And like, one thing that really highlights to me about that is when Krusty is first applying to establish the school and he goes to Quimby and Chalmers and that's like, oh, we've never seen this pairing before. That makes sense. Yeah, he's the superintendent. He's gotta oversee this stuff. And they say no, and the school just goes ahead anyway?
That was weird.
Well, they, he bribes Quimby, but Chalmers says no.
Yeah, but Quimby also refutes his bribe and says, you gotta hit me up on Grifter. And then he doesn't even do that. And it's just next scene, establish the school.
We're missing the scene. Like, it's, I don't.
Well, and Chalmers even goes, I guess we're doing this. And it's like, why have the scene if you're gonna undercut it?
Yeah, well, that, that just sounds very much like the episode commentary. And we're doing this, I suppose.
Yeah, cause I liked the, I, I did like the little bit of the mime stuff, like between Krusty and Chalmers, like.
Yeah, help. I even liked the line of, are you gonna teach STEM? Yeah, slapstick, tumbling, enormous shoes and mime. I was like, okay, that's fine.
Yeah. And, and the idea that mime would be the thing that had put him off is, is pretty funny. But yeah, it's just another one of these elements in this episode is just like, why did you include it? Like, and it, it doesn't even feel like it's being like, uh, subversive or that's like a comedic point in the episode. It just feels like bad writing. Like, yeah.
How do we close this scene? A character goes, wah wah, pretty much.
All right, but you know, it's an episode about clowning. Let's talk about the wackiness. Was this a wacky episode of The Simpsons?
Yep. When they're having that little lunch meeting with all the clowns talking about, ah, where did clowning go? Pennywise is just there.
Oh, is he? I missed that.
Yeah, that was Pennywise Krusty just chilling at the lunch table. And I'm like, oh, they're not gonna talk about this at all. That must've been an animation joke for sure. I laughed at the cast of The View, like, that, that gave me a good chuckle, like.
Take that, you bunch of clowns. Oh, hey, cat.
There's a cat.
We are on a such a hot streak with having cats guest on the podcast at the moment. Please introduce the cat to the people.
Um, to the people, um, this is Joey Jojo Junior Shabadoo. He got his name from the episode, like.
Naturally, no, no, you didn't get that name from somewhere else. Your great-grand uncle Joey Jojojo Shabadoo.
It's, I don't know why me and my wife fell in love with it. So when we were like, when we were getting this cat, like, okay, we have a name in mind. Purely because of that joke.
Yep.
That is so stupid.
That's wonderful. I, I love cats with long names as well. That's just really fun.
Yeah, he, he's a good boy. He's just, he likes to look at, he likes to people watch. Yeah, so he'll look out that window and like, see all the people walking by. We had somebody like, asking if I wanted to join a Bible study, like, right before. And he's in the window, like, watching me talk to them, like, what do these people want?
It's like, I'm judging you, Kevin.
He's a god cat. I love it. Um, but yeah, in that restaurant scene, I will say in terms of, you know, when we talk about wackiness, we also talk about animation. I gotta say, the food looked really good here. Like, Krusty got some, uh, like pasta dish with prawns. And I'm like, mm, damn. It's breakfast time here, but I think I might get some, uh.
Yeah, the mushroom and prawn, for sure. That sounded good. Um, the site gag that I really enjoyed, because it just felt like they were respecting the clown roots, the little, the school bus that was the clown car.
Yeah.
That legitimately made me laugh.
Yeah, okay, so this is one in a, a chain of a few jokes where I'm like, you had the joke and then you overstepped it. And it's that one, love the little school bus, like, yep. But then it's followed up, uh, like in the same scene with Mel House, but where's my glasses? And then Clown brings out the glasses with the, um, eyes that are on the springs.
Slinky eyes, yeah.
And then Nelson does the weirdest ho-ho that I've ever heard Nelson do, where it's like extended. And I think he's quoting a tune, but it doesn't sound like anything. Yeah, it was really weird.
It was really odd.
The other joke that fits that description for me is when they're at breakfast before Bart's first day of clowning.
My next night.
Yeah, and he's riding around on a unicycle and Homer's like, but what did I tell you about riding a unicycle around the breakfast table? He goes, you haven't. It's never come up. And I'm like, that's the joke. And then Marge oversteps it by going, oh, let's see here. And like, flicks through a diary with a shitload of like, really like lame, so I go, checks out.
That involve unicorn poop in brackets, clean and urn ashes stay in urn. And it's like.
Yeah, you had the joke. The joke was, it's never come up.
And really punch. It's like, it's never come up before. I'm like, oh, yeah, well, stop.
Yeah. Eh, anyway, what other wackiness stood out to us?
Uh, when they are doing the parabolic curve with the pie catapult, it just draws a line in midair.
And I really think that undercut the joke as well. It's just like, that feels like it's just for the audience and.
Yeah, like if it had gone to like Bart's perspective and he was learning the math from it, you know.
Sure, or yeah, if it was like a clown hanky in the end or some, or a balloon out, like, maybe, but yeah, it's.
Yeah, not the worst, but it was one of those things that kind of just stood out of being like, oh, I just draw a line in the air from magic.
Yeah, that was totally for our benefit and we didn't need it, like.
I think the wackiness that like, made me laugh was Bart for the last pork chop. Like, that felt like.
Loved it.
It felt straight out of like, old clown stuff. So like, I know they did their research and I know they made sure like, but this is kind of a note that I was curious about you got, your, your guys' perspective. When was the last time the TV clown was a big deal? Like, this is part of the problem with The Simpsons being on as long as it has.
The last time the TV clown was a big deal was Krusty Gets Busted. I, there's no TV clown in Australia.
It's been forty years. It's not a relevant thing anymore. Like, you can't go like, oh yeah, the, the TV clown's dead. No, it's been dead for thirty.
And I think that was kind of like, one of the original jokes with Krusty is that.
Very old hat style of entertainment that was still on.
Yeah, and they even brought it up in Seinfeld where, you know, George talking about Bozo the Clown and all that.
Clown, you're a clown, you don't know who Bozo is.
But yeah, I don't know if you knew this about me, Ryan, but I, for a year and a half, worked as a kids' party clown.
Yeah.
And even at that time, I could smell it in the air. A lot of kids went into it and found my vibe and makeup creepy.
Yeah, I just, even, so I thought about it when they were doing the discussion. When I was a kid, there was no TV clown except Krusty. So like, I'm gonna be thirty-five this year, so there hasn't been, in America, there hasn't been TV clowns in thirty-five years. And it's probably even longer than that. And it's just like, nah, it's just Krusty's one of those relics of the show that I'm like, man, I really don't know how you keep using him in a really truly relevant way.
Yeah.
They, they've ran their course with Krusty. I have no problem saying that. Like, I don't, I can't think of the last good Krusty storyline they've done on the show.
Well, and from the show's own admission, even in the classic era, it's hard to do episodes around him because his vocal delivery is so slow that you have to fact that in when you're writing scripts for this, which is actually a surprise that this one feels like it's blitzing through plot points at breakneck speed. Cause I, I was even watching a thing the other day. It's like, even McDonald's don't use Ronald the Clown, Ronald McDonald anymore.
Yeah, he's kind of around, but not much.
Not like, he's not even like, it's not even in the Happy Meal advertising or anything anymore. The mascot for that now is a Happy Meal box with creepy eyes.
Yeah.
I stand by, the only people I know who are into clowns are into clowns in a sexual way. Like, like, straight up. I don't know a single person who, like, is into clowns and it's not something dirty. Like.
Man, uh, okay, cause the TikTok algorithm sometimes like, even reveals things to me about my personality. And for some reason, I do keep getting, I keep getting recommended lives of, yeah, clown girls that are just either like, hanging out or like, playing guitars or like, it's like, what is, what is the algorithm trying to say to me? Why is it feeding me all these hot clown girls?
We have read your past, Elliot.
I mean, regular clown girls.
There, there is a dude that I follow on TikTok for like, political stuff, but the running joke is, if there's a hot clown, his followers were at hit, will at him. So they'll pop up in my feed because they're adding him in the comments. Like, dude, check this out. And I'm just like, what the fuck is happening? This is the only thing clown related I see. Like, what's going on?
Well, there's your episode. Krusty Gets Kinky.
Oh, Krusty fans, yeah, let's not do that. Uh, but like, I mean, there's more wackiness to talk about. This is a clowning episode. But how was the heart, did we feel but bumps for this episode?
No, and they tried.
Tiny bit. Like, there's a bit where Bart's in class and he keeps raising his hand with the answers and he goes, oh my gosh, I'm striving.
And then they dropped it.
Yeah, and then it never really comes back up again. Um, and there's a bit of anti-heart where, you know, we were talking before about Homer goes for the last pork chop and Bart kind of clowns his way to get to keep it. And Marge has a moment of, he deflected his father's rage. It's like, that's, you know, nice anti-heart of, you know, he's learned how to deal with abusive parents.
For me, like, the, the negative of heart in a Simpsons episode came at the end where Krusty is reaching desperately for his father's approval through nachos. I'm surprised, there's no way you read that, there's no way at the table read that you read that out loud and people laughed. There's no way. Like.
Oh, there is a theory I have that there is some sort of shared psychosis in the Simpsons staff at the moment that like, surely they think this is funny, but I think this is just a shared delusion of.
For anyone playing at home, there's a bit where, yeah, Bart's trying to make Krusty feel better. We go, oh, let's go get nachos. And he's like, did you say nakas? The Jewish word for love, fatherly love? And it's like, yeah.
Again, you're doing that for the audience benefit and then making this extended gap. And it's so pathetic.
And then it's followed up by one of the worst jokes they've ever done in the show, which is the timing joke. I, I recoiled when she, I, I knew she was coming. Cause they didn't follow it, they hadn't followed it up yet. And I'm like, oh my God, they're gonna save it for the end where she shows up. And it's like, the key to comedy is timing. And I'm like.
Yeah.
Yeah, big part of that didn't work for me is that she forgets it at the beginning. She goes, well, the key to comedy is, uh, uh, and then Cross is like, oh, what is it? Why?
And he's walking out of scene, yeah.
You do that joke, you can't do it at the end because the audience knows it's coming at the end. You have to plant it somewhere random. If there's only so much time left in the episode, the audience knows it's coming. That's the problem with that joke.
Or you bury it in the credits because, yeah, this is another episode that does, uh, actor riffs over the credits joke where it's like Fat Tony doing the announcements. And again, you have to qualify it with one week earlier because it doesn't make sense at times.
There's two ways to do the timing joke. You do it like randomly before the end of the episode because people won't know. Or if you do it at the end of the episode, you cut her off. Like, that's how you pay that off. She jumps in, hey, I know the secret to comedy. It's.
Time.
Yeah. Yeah, like, that's how you do that.
Just while we're on the very ending right before credits, there's some like weird sinister music playing over the credits as well. And I don't know why.
I think it's like a slight mafia reference or something.
Why? There was such a little part of this.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've talked about it already, but like, yeah, the mafia really undercuts the heart of what was working here, like, and especially because like, what little focus it gets is so Bart-centric that like, yeah, we don't see all the other kids that could thrive in this environment. Milhouse, Nelson, Ralph. And that, yeah, the ma, the mafia step in and like, completely rob this episode of the potential heart that it could have.
They came to rob it of money, instead they robbed it of heart.
Yeah, well, especially because then it's like, the mafia working at the school and all those jokes were fucking lame and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's all just such a shame. That's the heart. It's the shame of it all.
The, the one joke I enjoyed, like during the mafia segment was the Harvard bit, because everything they said was accurate.
Yeah.
Where they're like, ah, we're down a hundred dollars, send out more letters.
And something that I wish more people realized is that Hartford, Harvard, yes, is, I'm sure is a quality school, but it is marketing. It is not like, it's not the best school in the world. It's all marketing. Like, cause some real scumbags come out of Harvard. I think people need to realize like, it's all a marketing ploy to create Harvard like it's this great thing. And it's working.
Yeah, well, like, and that's a joke that works with everything else that the episode was setting up. Like, yeah, and it is such a shame because, yeah, we can have a heartfelt episode that's still a comedy show that talks about, yeah, these problems with uh, education and like, that's, you know, not also like an America-centric problem. Like, this is relatable to shit back here as well and like.
That's one thing I wasn't sure about was, would the public education stuff be, would hit for like you guys too? Because I know here in the States, it's a big battle right now of like, what do we do with education? Cause it's in a, it's in a rough place.
Well, I mean, that's the thing that I experienced is that, yeah, I really, I struggled in school and ADHD and certain other things. And like, uh, the kind of approach of examinations and stuff just didn't work for me. Cause I could often buckle under pressure under the day and like, yeah, it wasn't until I went to music uni that I thrived. yeah, it wasn't until I went to music uni that I thrived because everything was about music and that, you know, very single focused person where, yeah, I can get obsessed about, you know, things I really care about, but I can't about a broad range of subjects, you know? And then that's the kind of thing that I see in, um, you know, my nibblings, my niece and nephew, their parents put them in Montessori education and I'm like, look, they are doing great. They are thriving in that environment, but fuck me, it's expensive.
Yep.
But yeah, people that need alternate approaches to teaching shouldn't have to fucking pay through the nose for it.
Yeah, it should be an alternative, not a, you know, premium.
Yeah, exactly.
And then at the same time, those same schools that are charging a ton for tuition are in the United States are pulling tax funds from public schools. So it's like, it's making the problem worse. The public schools aren't getting enough money, so they're limited resources. You take some of those limited resources and it's just making it worse. And the dirty secret that I don't think enough people in the United States realize, those schools that are chartered and private, if your kid has any special kind of needs, they can kick your kid out and you're stuck. Like, so they're not, they're nothing special in regards to like access. It's, it's a private club. We're gonna charge for it and hopefully there's a benefit. But hey, if we don't like your kid, we'll kick your kid out. And that's not right. And that's what's just, it's so screwed up.
Yeah. And in terms of the private religious schools here and like, yeah, this just reminded me of a joke that I really fucking hated in this where Bart was like, hey, it's either I go to this clown school or Catholic school.
Like an episode they've already done.
Yeah. Oh, true. Whacking day.
Yeah, no, I hated this joke as well.
Not whacking day. There was the one with Liam Neeson where Bart did go to Catholic school.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So like.
Simpsons did it twice. So what, what's Bart speaking in this moment? Like.
Latin for sure.
So like, but the whole joke, for anyone who's not seen this is like, ah, I either get to go to clown school or I have to go to Catholic school. And my, uh, Homer and Marge are like, oh no. And they start, and then Bart starts reading on his, off his phone in Latin. And they're like freaking out. It's like, why? Literally none of this makes sense. Are they just scared of Latin now?
Uh, the joke I didn't care for was Marge being like, you're fine at Springfield Elementary. Like girl, you know damn well, she's not, he's not fine there. Come on.
Yeah. And the notes like, it's such a small thing to get hung up on, but like, yeah, tiny little notes written in red. It's like, that's not an official school note.
Yeah.
Where's the letterhead? Anyway, don't get too specific, but this episode deserves it. It it had a lot of fucking eh, whatever. We'll just send it to the fucking animators.
They also just pulled a lot of focus on those notes as well. So of course you're gonna talk about them.
So was, did this feel like an episode of The Simpsons? These are characters we know and love. Is this a show we know and love?
If you squint, you can kind of see Homie the Clown.
It feels like an episode in the sense that they've done this before. Like, that's what I like, they've done it like, and Homie the Clown did it better.
Oh, yeah. Infinitely better.
You know what? Like, we're going back to that moment where Bart pulls the clown stuff on Homer to get the last pork chop and Homer's delighted by it. It was in that moment that I was like, okay, I can forgive this episode for retreading Homie the Clown because you are taking a different angle on it. You're putting Bart in it. Okay. So let's just say for argument's sake that, yeah, in this universe, Homie the Clown doesn't exist. Homer never went to clown college or whatever. But the fact that there wasn't that follow-up, because yeah, I will say the integrity that was working was Bart. And it makes sense for his character to thrive under these circumstances. And even in a situation where he could beat Lisa at a questioner thon or whatever the fuck this was.
Yeah.
But then the show integrity after that is just so poor.
Yeah. Look, I think, cause I was thinking about this one after I finished watching it and I was like, okay, structurally and from a story perspective, Homie the Clown follows characters. This one follows the journey of the school and we do not care about the school.
Hmm.
Because it's just.
That's a big problem.
It's not about Krusty's emotional journey with it. It's not about Bart, uh, having enrolled in it. It's just about the school exists. How are we gonna get rid of? Cause that was the other thing I was realizing. End of Homie the Clown, the clown college still exists. It's still there. But it's not relevant because it's not what the story is about. You're not sitting there going, well, why does that not show up ever again? It's because it doesn't matter.
Yeah, because Homie the Clown, Homie the Clown was a character driven story. And I, I swear, if I were to go through every episode of The Simpsons and just do good versus bad, I guarantee all the good ones. It's a, there's a character driven story and probably the bulk of the bad ones, it's, it's either not character driven or the character driven parts aren't correct. Like, the good Simpson, and that's just screenwriting one on one. Good stories are driven by characters, not situations.
Yeah. And, and that's what this episode is, is situation, situation, sit like, because even like we've sort of praised the, where Bart and Lisa go ahead in the quiz, whatever thing. But that's a relatively short scene and it's also like right next to this other scene where it's like the big recital. And we don't actually get a scene from that. It's just Reunion Wolf Castle's kid playing yakity sax to Bart and Milhouse teaching. And yeah, that scene was just all about Homer going, why didn't you play an instrument like that, Lisa? And then it's this big extended fucking fight between them and it just hangs on Lisa being sad for three seconds.
Yeah. Look, I mean, I didn't, I didn't like the walk it took to get to the line, but I do like the bit where my Homer goes, well, we need to be more yakity. And Lisa's like, I'm plenty yakity mom. And then Marge is like, I mean, you're not very yakity.
They were setting up a Lisa Bart conflict where Lisa's not, it's straight like Lisa on ice or another episode where Bart's doing well. They were setting up the potential conflict of like Bart is starting to outshine Lisa. They could have went, they should have went back to the elementary school. And it looked at like how half the school, how half the class is gone now and how they're struggling with that. Like it's all built into act one and into act two and is all like tossed. I'm, I bet there's a version, there's a draft of this without the mafia. And potentially has a far more interesting conflict.
Yeah, look, and give Joe Mantegna a payday because he's great, but yeah, not at this expense.
You know how you introduce Fat Tony, his kid? There you go. Bam. We don't have to then.
Yeah.
Like it, he's just, he could be a minor character. He doesn't need to steal the show.
Yeah. And it's another one where like, yeah, this episode introduces Reunion Wolf Castle's kid. I don't think we've seen Dita before and like, it's a shame that that didn't even come back to me because yeah, there's a slight comment there of like, yeah, parents paying their way for their kid to get into school. I mean, uh, there was another episode that highlighted the whole, uh, rowing university, that whole controversy with them. Actress lady from Full House, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. But that's not even a point. They just go, ah, son, we'll get you some ice cream and a Lamborghini. And it's just, it's the brat kid from Marge, be not proud.
But that's the thing. That's also, you could use that to illustrate, um, what Ryan was talking about where, you know, Bart's sitting there and Krusty has this whole bit of like, eh, your grades aren't exactly a woo girl. Why should I let you in kid? And then Rainier walks in and goes, I'll give you all the tuition you want and an extra wing. Let my kid join.
Yeah. Which is again, like another part of these episodes is where you're paying attention to the scene you wrote before because like, yeah, Krusty originally is in it for the money and like then hazard like, oh, your grades aren't quite good. It's like, what do you care? Does it, did the check clear?
Yep. They did not let me into music school for my talent. I could pay the tuition.
Uh, but what would we like to change? Ryan, why don't you kick this one off? What would you like to change about this episode?
So just talking to you guys, I think the framework is there for a story about education and about how people get pushed aside. So I would say Bart gets in, maybe he's the scholarship kid. Like he's the one that makes Krusty laugh. All the other kids have to pay their tuition and then the Rainier, Rainier's son will make Fat Tony's kid one of them. And then we'll add a third rich kid. So I want like three unfunny kids taking all the focus from the other students who are talented. And like creating that conflict. And then I want to introduce like somebody who's really excelling Ralph or Milhouse. Just somebody we maybe already know and they're doing really good, but they can't afford the tuition because the tuition is insanely high. Create that internal conflict. Let's jump back to Lisa. Like the, the A story should be the clown school and how the kids are doing there. And the B story should be how the public school is now losing money because the money that would be going to Springfield Elementary is being split now to this clown college, this clown elementary school. It just creates a natural internal conflict. And then Krusty, I would, I want Krusty to make the right decision. I want him to, like maybe the prize that the rich kids are trying to steal is a spot on the show. Like, like Krusty's newest assistant is, that's the reward at the end of the school year.
That's pretty good.
And you point to Bart should be the student. And then Krusty is being pressured by Rainier. Somebody with money to be like, no, I gave you a quarter of a million dollars. My son's gonna be the one who gets that spot because it happens. Like there are, like this is, America's not a meritocracy. It is about the people with money, you know, flipping Katy Perry just went in his face.
I know. I keep reading that.
Other than a stunt.
I keep going like, but why?
Cause she thought people would like her for it. And it turns out, no.
But yeah, that's why my note of there's the frame of a good idea here. And I think they really had something. And I just, the mafia stuff is what sank it.
Well, your idea then, like, because my answer was just cut the mafia thing. You were on a good track and then you would introduce the mafia. Like the way you just pitched involves the mafia in a more organic way. Yeah. And Michael wasn't a special guest voice actor. You can absolutely bring Fat Tony's kid back into this. And then, yeah, that gives you an organic way to plant that seed and then bring the mafia into it. That's actually quite an elegant way that, uh, has the mafia involved. Um, uh, how about you BT? What would you like to change?
I mean, largely echoing the same things, but yeah, it'd be fair enough to have, you know, Krusty starts with some money. So somewhat Rainier or something gives him a whole bunch of money. And then hit, this kid sucks, but then he's like, I would give you an extra million to let him, give him all As. And they do, but then it's like to the point of, well, then you're gonna go out in the world as a graduate of mine and you're not funny. You don't understand any of this. And maybe, you know, Bart or one of the other kids just stopped showing up one day and it's like, but you were the best one. Why are you not coming? He's like, I can't, my parents can't afford this. Again, it's relying right there.
It would borrow a little bit from the weight loss episode, you know, like the struggle of the fam- but that's a, I, I would argue when The Simpsons are struggling with money, that allows some pretty good storytelling. I, I don't, I've always been a big fan of, I guess it's now the Bob's Burger approach of the family doesn't have infinite funds. Um, which has been a while since The Simpsons have had limited funds and it's kind of sucks.
Yeah. Well, and especially if it's, yeah, all these rich kids paying top dollar to like, cause that'll then raise the bar of like the entry level tuition. And that's just, yeah, easy baked into the story stuff. And yeah, I guess that comes down to my overall thing of what I change is you've just gotta tighten up this thing and remember what you're doing scene to scene. Like that big competitive quiz thing, that needs to be a, the climax of the episode.
Yeah.
Cause I, I love that Bart's thriving, but I'll be honest, that scene where he's answering the questions, it doesn't do anything for me. Cause it's like, it's not that like the parabolic thing. It's not that using applied knowledge in clowning like, so ma- maybe changing that to be a physics specific exam. And then Lisa becomes insecure, like you were saying before, Ryan, like the, they're building it up. Like Lisa is having her criticisms of this. And even there's a heart moment that I fucking love where it's like, Bart being like, Lisa, can't you understand this school is making me feel how you feel about school?
Yeah.
And it's like, oh, I do get that. And then he hugs her with a whoopee cushion. And I'm like, oh, perfect. You've undercut the heart moment. And it's like, how you do it with clowning.
I wonder if it's part of the whole status quo has to reset kind of deal.
Oh, yeah.
Like they can't leave Bart. Like I wonder if the reason we can't have a better story is because we can't leave him in this school. Which blows my mind because it's The Simpsons. They can just end it and next week we know it won't be, it's fine. Like it's thirty five years. It's, it's not a big deal. We know that the status quo is gonna be next episode. You can still give us a satisfying ending.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the status quo and you know, it's bleak, but it's honestly how a bunch of Krusty episodes ends is that he finds out this is not a profitable endeavor and he shuts it down and goes back to his way of doing things. I mean, that's the other thing I don't think works about this episode. It's set up with kids aren't attending my shows. So I'll open up a school to teach them how to clown. Kids that have already been demonstrated not to be into clowns, like.
They, they made it seem like Bart was the reason so many people submitted, which I did, I've never thought Bart was that popular in school. Especially, I think they've made it a point where Bart and Milhouse are bullied, but they get a reason why. So I don't think the motive of filling out their roster at this school is because Bart. Like, I don't think, I don't know if he's ever been that popular.
You'd also just thinking on the, uh, you know, inciting incident, instead of being, oh, my audience is old. I'm gonna start a clown college. These, these things are not really connected. Be like, Krusty be like, I'm getting old. I need someone else to kind of fill in some of the space. And there's no good clowns. He can't find any good clowns to cover some time, some time in his show.
Yeah. And that's just, it's all reasons that I go, oh yeah, that opening scene, you can completely cut that. No one's worse off.
Oh, for sure. Like you don't need that opening scene. I think it's real simple. Krusty's ratings are down. He's getting old. And when he looks at like the other people, like Mel, they could just go like, Mel's the youngest person on the show and he's forty two, you know, something like that.
Yeah. He's tired. He doesn't have the energy for it anymore. Showbiz like.
I'm a lazy, lazy man.
Can't keep doing all these flips.
All right. It is time for our final notes.
Nah, it's time for a final notes. Notes time, five, five, final notes.
Actually, yeah, that was a thing I saw the other day. Apparently that song, the da, 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 da.
Yep.
It was originally meant to be a march and some like music theory TikToker or whatever pointed out that like, somehow over time, that music just got sped up. And like, cause a march is meant to be at a certain BPM, whereas that clown song is like at one twenty or something. And she's like, yeah, because we've looked at this and like heard it was like meant to be like imposing threatening music, but like it sounds so, but actually when you slow it down, it's actually a lot more sinister. Yeah.
No, like that's, that was probably the original joke of like, here's this sinister music. We've sped it up to the point where it's chipmunk wacky. So.
Yeah.
That's, that's neat how that joke has kind of lost a time. And now it's just the clown music.
Uh, Ryan, do you have any other parts of this episode you want to mention before we move on to the rankings?
Yeah, it's so quick. You'll miss it. The, when they're like, what are kids into? They reference the kid, the dentist kid.
Yeah.
I'm like. Dive after dentist?
Yep.
Yeah, that's get, that is old enough to vote. Like you couldn't go for a more recent thing on YouTube or TikTok. Like really?
Reference the dentist kid high from the dentist meme from nineteen sixty six.
Yeah, like that, oh, the, the joke that Flippin Brockman said about like Hollywood doesn't write endings anymore. They pitch sequels. I'm like, yeah, Simpsons, I don't know if, like, that feels like a pot calling the kettle black right there. Like, could we? Maybe not.
No, it's funny because yeah, recently on Starring Springfield, our other podcast where we're reviewing the movies that start the Castle of the Simpsons. What was it we reviewed? Fuck, I'm already forget- oh yeah, Babe Two, Pig in the City.
Yeah.
Where we were like, it wasn't a good movie, but we were surprised that the box office, it lost money, but, and especially on its opening weekend, it was going against like four other movies that weren't sequels. And it's just like pointing back to an interesting time where a sequel wasn't a guaranteed, uh, money maker. And yeah, anyway.
Yeah. So that was the one where I, that was my last one. Just kept Brockman saying something that like, The Simpsons, literally the only program in television that really shouldn't be making a joke about endings.
Yeah.
How about you BT? Any other notes?
Yeah, look, I got a couple of quick positives. Um, Krusty has a line of, at the bottom of the barrel is lined with gold. I'm like, okay, that's, that's all right.
Yeah.
Uh, and also he's, you know, when someone tells him, uh, how much tuition is these days, like, ah, that's Malibu rehab money. Well, that's a good way to phrase it.
Yeah. Didn't need the whole, uh, dollar sign in his eye. Oh, what's it?
You can sell comedy props like that. And he's like, oh no, this is my condition. It's like, yeah.
Yeah. You had a fine enough joke and you just went too far with it.
Yep. Uh, there's, it's, I wish it was a little more prominent because it's kind of implied the school is just on like the channel ten lot. But they don't pull to it a lot, which is good. It's subtle, but then I almost missed it because it wasn't really, you know, have a bit where the kids are just walking through a, you know, busy studio lot. And then all of a sudden they're at a school. It's like, yeah, it's school rotations.
That could have been a joke about how many empty lots there are in Los Angeles right now. Like there's so many empty spaces. That's like, well, we might as well put a school in one of them. Like I wouldn't be shocked if that happens. So, but it, it was so quick that like BT, I didn't even realize that until you said it BT. And I'm like, oh yeah, they are shooting in Krusty's studio. Or they're having the school in his studio. That, that's.
Yeah. Cause you do, you do see some exterior shots, but it's just kind of a big kind of slightly domed building. And you don't, unless you are familiar with the shape of a studio lot. Uh, anyway, um, a bit, a riff I kind of liked, which is the mobber selling the markers to Ogdenville. And there's one teacher who's just like, you got any reds, man? Come on. You're taking advantage of my addiction to highlighting important material. Like, okay, that's, that's reasonable.
Red's not even the best color to highlight though.
Yeah. That's the prob- that's the problem. That's the, hang on, where's my bell?
That's the slight Jordan's anal corner.
Yeah. In that, yeah, markers are not highlighters. Those are different things, but it's fine. I could leave it. Uh, there's a bit, like it's stupid enough for me to like it where they're putting a wire on Krusty and he's all giggling. He's ticklish. He's like, I'm not even touching you yet. Yeah. But I know you're gonna.
I like that. Cute little character detail.
I felt that because I feel like we all know that person who's ticklish and I'm that person. So I was like, oh, they're talking about me.
Yeah. Uh, my last note is actually a positive as well. There's the bit where the school's on fire and the helium tanks explode and all the kids just doing a high pitch, oh no.
Yeah.
Like, okay, that, that worked. I got the shock wave of helium. Just gave everyone a squeaky voice for a sec.
Yeah. In that scene though, like I really don't think they needed the clown firefighters to come along. Cause yeah, one, it doesn't make sense. And two, like, yeah, you've already baked in reasons why this place can go up in flames quickly. Like you didn't need this to add to that. Like you didn't need this to add to that. Yeah.
Yeah. Don't need to spray confetti on the fire and that just creates more fire. We, we got it. It's, it's not going to do well.
Yep. Uh, another joke I hated that went on too long is, uh, Rainier Wolf Castle being like, oh, we've got a German word for it. And then it goes on and on. Krusty's like, oh wow. And he's like, I'm not finished.
Yeah.
A moment of heart as well with, was Marge like thanking Krusty again. This is where I thought this episode was gonna,
Yeah.
lean into that part of the story more. And like the parents proud of their kids for finally excelling and stuff like, yeah. But then Fat Tony enters stage left.
Yep.
And then, yeah, the mashed potatoes thing with lunch lady Dora.
Oh God.
So fucking tedious.
You know how you do that better? You do the shadow of it. Like you go, we're going to make you eat it. And then it cuts to the wall and the shadow, the shadow would have been a funnier bit and it would have felt a little bit more sinister. Cause like in mo-, you know, classic movies, you cut to the shadow to show the true violence of shoving food into somebody's mouth.
And then you can have the whole, no, no, no. And then it's so bland. It like, and then that be the undercutting joke there. But yeah, this is just weird. Uh, the policeman memorial wall, just mentioning jokes I fucking hated. And that brings us to the rankings. It's time to rank this thing on The Simpsons Index. We rank using a six point scale, which starts down the bottom at failure. Maybe if the episode was just meh. You give it a participant, but for the positive rankings, you got okay bronze, good silver, excellent gold, but for the best of the very best, you give cubiczakonia. I'm going to go first. Let me show you how it's done. Ah, look, I'm failing this one. Like, okay, in a bubble, I don't actually think it's as failure as a lot of failures. But just from the aspect that you are retreading ground and you did this with it.
Yeah.
Like the fresh take here was that, okay, it's Bart going through the clown school. What do you do with it? And it's like, you showed potential and you had good bits and you let me down so hard by the end that, I like, I have to fail this. BT, what do you reckon?
Yep. Um, look, the conversation certainly nudged, nudged me towards the pit. Uh, I just, I don't care enough about it to fail it. Uh, which arguably is, you know, a bit more of a, yeah, exactly on its own. It's, it'll, it'll drift through the head. And I agree in the sense of if you take this as a whole, in terms of the entire show, yeah, you're letting it down. Because even early on I wrote down, oh, this is just home of the clown, but that's fine. It just depends on what you do with it. And then to do nothing with it is a big disappointment, but taken unto itself, it's, it's forgettable and that's about it.
Ryan, please finish it off.
So how I like to determine what's a participant and what's a failure, because that's where I'm at. And there is no, there's no meddling for this episode.
Oh no.
I like to participant the episodes where it takes me some time, like real effort to fix the found aid. Like, it's like, okay, this is a tough nut to crack. Like, cause right, I will say, as critical as I've been, writing is difficult. I fully understand like why episodes can be hard. But my rule is it's a participant if it takes me more than a day to fix it. If I'm sitting with an episode and I cannot think of a good solution quickly. I fail the ones worth, within the conversation of our recording, we've, in my opinion, fixed the episode. And we fixed the episode between the three of us talking about what we would change. I firmly believe what we pitched to ourselves is a silver episode.
Hmm.
But like silver on the basis of the framework and the heart. And then what takes it to either gold or higher is the comedic nail. Like, so just the three of us, in my opinion, were able to take this episode and make it a silver. And then like, let's let some comedic writers come in and really zhuzh up the jokes.
Yeah.
So for me, it's going to be a failure, which thanks to BT's participant, does keep it in that peripheral of like, it's not even close to the worst of the failures. But it, it really shouldn't be in the participant clearing. So I think it's in a great spot.
Well, yeah, it'll be a shiny failure and for better, you know, season 34 hasn't had that many episodes, uh, have a failure ranking, you know? We had the one unanimous failure of the many saints of Springfield, which again, coming back to my point is you didn't need to give Joe Mantegna. He, he, he gets one episode per season, I reckon.
Yeah.
And this is the one where like him and Flanders become buddies and it's like, that one also sucked. Um, but the only other episodes to get shades of failure was the dull participant of Top Goon. I believe that's where Nelson and Moby come friends.
Yeah.
And Bartless, which got a participant by split decision and I don't fucking remember it.
Yeah. It's the one where there's like a alternate universe where Bart never existed.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Um, I don't really remember anything other than that, but.
Yeah. It was one of those ones that flipped style like halfway through and just didn't make a lot of sense.
But for fans of the podcast, you only got to go back to season 30 before you're seeing a ton of failures. So for season 34 to only like, I'm on the spreadsheet right now. So with what we just did, plus what you already have, there's only seven failures. Like that's pretty damn good. And I hate that I have to say that.
Call The Simpsons.
Have to say that. Um, just because one thing, I was really thinking about this today. People, the easy defense is, well, yes, it's not the golden era, but it's as good as its competition. And I always stand by, no. Like right now on adult animation, The Simpsons is lagging on its own network. Besides Adult Swim and other places like Max and stuff where they make adult animation. It's not with its peers right now. So.
No.
Well, not consistently, because I will say, like, there are episodes that they do that, like a mid childhood night stream. Yes. You're hanging with, you're, you're as good as any Bob's Burgers that has came out. And not as, like, there's a couple of shows on Max that I love that like, no offense to The Simpsons, they're, they're just on a different level right now.
Yeah.
And I expect a different level from The Simpsons. And I think everybody should. Cause I'll echo a sentiment. I know I've heard you guys talk about the people who say, oh, The Simpsons are good now. It's like, kinda.
Yeah. They're trying a bit harder.
Where, where, we're getting glimpses. I want consistent. I would love it. Like they've announced that they're going to get four more seasons.
Yep.
I would love it if season 37, 38, one of those, no failures.
Yeah. All, all bronze or silver at least would be nice.
Like I would, if they had a season where the lowest thing that came out was a participant, I would feel like that's them reaching the standard that they should be striving for. And I know in my heart that Matt Selman can do. Like, cause he, he's the de facto showrunner at this point. I think him and Al split the reins. I don't know how, Al's been doing it forever. I, I don't know why he doesn't retire. He's earned that retirement. I just, I want to see a whole season where Matt's running the show. I really want to see. I think if he had the reins for a whole season, we could get a.
We could get something out of it.
Pretty, something pretty good.
But yeah, that'd be interesting. And like especially to end the, oh my God, like 24 now year reign of Algena showrunner. It's so funny because yeah.
Earned it. Like man, I, I thought people wanted to retire at his age. Like I didn't think people wanted to work that long. And I know we'll forever be wealthy because of the show. Al doesn't have to keep working. Like he'll get his cut. So if Al, you're listening, I love you, retire. You've earned it.
Yes, you can rest. You can rest now.
But also.
Trust Matt.
But I'm curious and not to turn this into a product placement for Max, because I certainly have my criticisms of that service. But we only just got it in Australia. What's the adult animation you recommend from that?
So Scavengers Reign is something I recommend to everybody. It is a sci-fi show. A little bit dystopian because they're like on a, like passenger ship and they crash land on an alien planet. I'm pulling, I'm pulling up Max right now to make sure, like I give you guys the recommendations that I love.
Man, I'm just looking at some of the images. That looks, that's a beautiful, awesome looking show.
It's beautifully animated. It's only one season. There could be more, but right now it's, you know, it's tough to get more. But that, but the 12 episodes are great. They do such, what I love about that show is the alien work that they do. They make such a good effort to be like, it's not just an animal you know from earth. It's reskinned. No, they really did their effort. Um, another one that I haven't started like yet, we watched the pilot, we're going to watch it is Common Side Effects. My brother's raving about it. Same people who did Scavengers Reign. It did get another season. So you can binge watch it and know you're going to get more. It's about the pharmaceutical industry. It, it looks phenomenal.
Yeah. I've been, uh, recommended that, but it's kind of hard to watch in Australia. Even it's not on Max here. Like we've got some weird.
The rights, man. Rights are weird.
Yeah.
Rights are bullshit.
Yeah. Like AEW television, which is on Max for you guys is on fucking Disney plus here. And they don't have everything. Uh, that's been frustrating. And yeah, there's a lot of Adult Swim that left, left off Max in Australia. So.
And then something I recommend, like Elliot, I know you have some nieces and nephews. I love the Jellystones. That's a show made for kids. But it's using the Hanna-Barbera, like old cartoons and like they're in Little City of, they're, they're in the city of Jellystone. So Yogi Bear, all those kinds of characters, but it's recent and it's very funny.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. Like something you could sit down with the kids and have them nieces, nephews over. And if you want to break from Bluey, you have that option. I like, I know people love Bluey, but.
Yep.
I'm sure we're getting to a point where people are probably getting a little sick of it.
Oh yeah. We're, we're hitting a peak Bluey saturation here.
Yeah.
But yeah, Ryan, thank you so much for joining us for the podcast today.
No, no problem. I love, um, sitting down with you guys. I just want to commend you because I do not believe there's another Simpsons podcast that has went on as long as you guys have and like as deep. I don't know if there's one that's went past season 20, like.
Four finger discounter in it at the moment and.
It gets bleak.
Yeah. Those guys aren't having a fun time.
I, and I kind of understand, back to my arc, my one point, like I think around season, like the 2009, 2008, you could make an argument that like, well, they were just playing down to their peers. Cause this was before American Dad was hitting its stride. It was when King of the Hill was kind of coming to an end. It's before Bob's came out. So like, there wasn't a lot of competition. So like, they kind of were allowed to drag their feet. But that was 15, that was 15 years ago. Adult animation now, heck, I didn't even bring up Netflix. And like, I know, I, I love Big Mouth. Like there's plenty of good animated stuff that The Simpsons really need to step their game up to. And I think they could. I really do. Like.
They have the resources to do that.
They have the resources and I, I know they've got the writing talent. Like I know they've got the talent to really like nail it. I, I really wish they would go back. They say they still do it this way. I know they don't do it like they did in the nineties. I know they aren't like, I would bet money. It's maybe draft three, maybe draft three. I really, there's no way they're getting to like draft 15, draft 16.
Yeah. Properly kicking it around a writer's room or something. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there was a very telling thing in a podcast I listened to, listened to recently, the Good One podcast, where they had, Matt Selman on, uh, talking about Lisa, the boy scout. And he was like, uh, the pitching process has gotten, he said, a lot more efficient. He said, like, people used to have to like audition, like a seven minute treatment of their episodes. And he said, well, we were shooting too many ideas down from that process. So we kind of just let the writers go with it. And it's like, yeah, you're missing that doomsday process. You need to fucking.
You, you didn't sort out the wheat from the chaff.
Yeah. Absolutely told on himself there. Like, yeah.
Oh man. There's a reason that was so effective. Like it's not about efficiency.
Yeah.
It's about getting the, I hate, I hate this phrase because it's toxic. The whole like pressure makes diamonds. Like there's some truth to it.
Yeah. Look, I would say as we're going into what's season 37 or whatever, imagine if they went, okay, this season's going to be 12 episodes, but we're going to polish every script.
Mm-hmm.
And like, imagine an entire season, 12 episode season of silver golds, you know?
They're one of the few shows that are still doing the full 30 or 22 episodes. Most shows aren't anymore. And I'm kind, I'm okay with that. Like.
Yeah. I don't think any Simpsons fan would complain, ah, it's only a 12 episode season, if they were quality, if you had some, you know,
Well, and that's it.
Bangers in there.
Yeah. And with this season, season 34 that we're talking about today is, you know, we said, there's a lot less failures than they have been in other seasons. And you know, it is mostly episodes that are scoring some kind of bronze here. And yeah, you're right, BJ. If they cut that episode order and fucking honed in on the ones that were working, then yeah, we'd probably see a silver gold season more like it. Yeah.
I believe in them.
Good luck Simpsons. But, uh, for now, Ryan, do you have anything to plug or anything?
Um, not at the moment. Um, if you are listening and need a writer's assistant, or you just want a writer to come in and help out, I am your man. I, uh, I don't mean to toot my own horn, but I feel like I'm getting stronger with each day. I, uh, I took a animated pilot course from a showrunner who was a showrunner recently. So it was nice to learn from somebody who's been in the industry in this decade. Like, and truly like the way that she ran that class, it was a grinder. There were things in my original pilot that I think if she would have let slide and it wouldn't have been a big deal, but she like really pushed me. And I think that's what any good showrunner should do is pushing your writers to be the best they can be.
Oh, awesome. No, I really enjoyed your pitches of what would you like to change in this episode? So yeah. Oh, good stuff, man. But BT, what if people want to hear more of us and, uh, us saying what we'd like to change about various things?
Uh, you know, same old crap. Starring Springfield. It's, you know, it's on the podcast you're listening to now or patreon.com/sidequeststudios where we've got like, just hundreds of hours available of entertainment for like $5. What are you stupid? That's value. Don't be stupid.
If somebody was brand new to your guys' other podcasts, what would be the most recent movie you guys, um, reviewed involving a Simpsons cast member?
Uh, the one that just hit the feed, was that Jingle All the Way?
Jingle All the Way. Yeah.
Banger.
Yeah. It's, it's a good.
Banger.
Like an unmitigated classic that I don't know if they realized at the time what they were making, like how well it's aged.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I, I just looked down at my phone to bring up a list of everything and I forgot to mention a part in the episode that really threw me for a loop.
All right. Very light note here. All right. Let's go.
But I like it.
Yeah. Fat Tony's reaction to something that, uh, Lou, Louis said, hold on, let me play the scene out.
After all, we Romans invented civilization.
No, we stole it from the Greeks.
What the hell is that?
I don't even know what the AI, it's just funny. Cause like depending on the historian, you can't even connect modern Italians to ancient Rome anyway.
Yeah.
So I would, like, I wouldn't be claiming the, the cradle of civilization if I was Fat Tony.
Oh, that, just that.
Yeah, that was weird.
There's some line reads, man, but there's fucking.
You know how, uh, everyone points to that bit in Craven the Hunter where the villain just goes, for like no reason. It's kind of like that.
I missed that meme.
Oh, it's out there.
I can't believe that movie even came out, man.
Yeah. Everyone saw the trailer. I'm like, really? Okay. So any, fine.
Uh, yeah, anyway, uh, go onto the Patreon, patreon.com/sidequeststudios. You can suggest the movies that we review for starring Springfield.
And you know what? If there's a member of The Simpsons in Craven the Hunter, we'll do that.
That's it.
God, I wish.
I don't think there is, but this is the power you wield as a patron.
That's it. And it's funny because I don't think we've actually done any superhero movies, but we've done a couple of superhero movie parodies.
Yeah. Like Mystery Men and the superhero movie.
Surprising banger.
You cut, you know, it's kind of shocking. You would think one member of The Simpsons cast would have been a part of one of these films by now.
Absolute juggernauts of entertainment. You'd think they'd be in Azaria somewhere.
Surely somewhere in the MCU.
Azaria for sure. He, he would be a great character. Like I now know why we haven't, he would have been great in like the first Captain America in the 1940s. Like he could have been one of the, so he could have been one of the Hellraisers. Like, oh damn. See, now I'm sad that he's not in it. Cause.
Look, there's plenty of voice actors. You're telling me they don't need a robot sidekick with a comedy voice?
Yeah. That's what I was thinking actually. Like, yeah. Azaria for like a Java sort of thing, definitely.
Azaria should have been Herbie in the upcoming Fantastic Four movie, which I am actually pretty excited about.
Clearly I think, uh, Ultron should have been voiced by Mo. Hey, there are no strings on me.
Anyway, all the links to everything in the show notes, but for now that's The Simpsons Index for this week. Once again, thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you so much. You guys have a great day.
Cheers. You too. And BT, thank you.
Oi.
And I've been your host, Elliot Jaren Hill. That's all the mustard in the house.
All the mustard in the schoolhouse.
Oh, rock.
Good night.
Thank you for listening to Simpsons Index Podcast, which is also an online spreadsheet available at the Simpsonsindex.com. We're also on social media. You can follow us on Blue Sky, Instagram and on threads. Links for all that and more are down in the show notes. And lastly, consider giving us a five star review. Why not? We'd do it for you. Now there's no bonus scenes for this episode. Everything we left in was pure gold. So we'll catch you next time.